That is not, wasn't on the top of my list. Can you hear us?
I really like this.
Hi Clint.
I know.
Alright, it is six thirty, so we're gonna go ahead and start the meeting. We'll have everyone stand at the table for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item would be roll call, Kyza.
Here.
Dan.
Here.
Craig.
Yes.
Cory.
Here.
Kyza, it's here. Item B, persons who requested an audience with the board. Good evening, everyone. We'd like to let you into the school district of Osceola School Board meeting and public comment portion of the meeting. Your presence here today demonstrates your commitment to our schools and our community, and we appreciate your engagement. Before we get to the public comment portion, I'd like to outline the rules and guidelines for public comments. These rules are designed to ensure that public comment period is productive, respectful, and orderly. Each speaker will have a maximum of five minutes. We expect all speakers and attendees to maintain a respectful and courteous tone during their comments. Personal attacks, disruptive language, or disruptive behavior are unacceptable. Public comments should relate to matters that fall within the jurisdiction of the school board. Please refrain from discussing confidential or personally identifiable information during our comments, as we cannot address such matters in a public forum. Public comment is an opportunity for you to express your views, but it is not a forum for back and forth discussions or questions. Or members may choose to address comments or request further information at a later time. We value your input and appreciate your cooperation in following these guidelines. Your perspective and insights are invaluable as we make decisions that impact our school and community. First up, we have Cara Gilbertson on the topic of building options. If you would sub to the poll, please.
Good evening. Thank you allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Cara Gilbertson, and I am a teacher at OMS, a parent, and a taxpayer in the district. I've been a part of this community and district since 2005, and I'm proud to live and work here. Before I begin, I want to make it clear that I'm in support of moving forward with the plan for a new elementary school. It's long overdue. I want to address some concerns I have about option three, adding onto OIS and moving fifth grade to OMS. This plan looks very, very easy on paper, too easy. I know it's significantly cheaper than building a new school, but this process needs to be looked at far more in depth than just two-floor plans. When I look at OIS with an addition, I see it only has one art room and one guidance room. There are two music rooms available that I assume will both be used for music classes. Where will both of our art teachers teach? What about our four absolutely necessary school counseling staff members? Just because we condensed to one building for 4K through fourth grade doesn't mean we can get rid of teachers and staff members. We will still be serving the same number of children and families. Is cutting staff part of the plan with this option? If so, that needs to be clearly communicated to staff and community members during this planning process. The three building principles that are current buildings are busy 110% of the time, maybe more. We simply cannot afford to cut staffing in this area either, yet there are no extra spaces for these people on the plans. I also hope you're considering the recommended ratios of school counselors to students, and then planning to have more than the recommended. It's no secret that the mental health and behavior needs of our current students are astronomical. At OMS, we have a strong tradition of having excellent data reports and test scores. Besides the amazing staff members, we have been able to reach kids largely because of our ability to have smaller class sizes and a block schedule. If we move fifth grade to the middle school, it is very possible that this schedule will have to be a change to accommodate roughly 100 more students. This will impact the fifth grader's ability to have specials, and it will impact our HEC teachers, staff members, who are largely shared between the high school and middle school. You see, the ripple effect of moving grade levels is far and wide, not just a cheaper price tag and shuffling kids and teachers to new classroom spaces. You will have to decide what you're willing to sacrifice for a cheaper price tag, and then communicate that to all stakeholders before the ballot comes out. With the option three floor plan, our tech department will need to move out of OMS, yet there is not allocated space for them on the addition. Where will they go? These are questions that need answers before we decide to just move forward. Our HEC teachers may need to share classrooms, putting teachers on carts and sharing rooms is a step back in time. It communicates a clear message of you and your content area are not valued here. In today's teaching market, they will go elsewhere in a hurry. At OMS, there will be no extra gym space, yet our morning PE time has already been a major issue for years, and now we'd be adding even more kids to the problem with no real solution. The gym is also an important part of allowing kids to move during recess in the winter month. My eighth graders and I eat lunch at 10:33 every morning, lunch. The last lunch ends at 12:30. When will we fit in another lunch with no extra kitchen space or cafeteria space? We also need to make sure each grade level gets adequate recess time. It's already a bummer there is no playing around equipment here at OMS, but you can't put fifth graders here without a play space and equipment for them at recess. Remember, fifth graders are 10 and 11 years old. You'll need to plan financially for that. If the board decides to move forward with option three, there will also need to be paid summertime for teachers to move, unpack, and set up their rooms. Nearly every teacher at OMS would need to move, which includes packing, moving, and unpacking. This is a huge undertaking for our custodial staff or a paid company, and in-service time won't be enough for teachers to unpack, settle in, and do all of the normal in-service tasks. Most teachers put their heart and soul and paycheck into their classrooms. It is a much larger task than unpacking a few boxes. If the schedule changes and OMS is no longer teaching on an 80-minute block schedule, teachers will need adequate pay time to plan lessons and rework all of their materials. It would be such a tragedy if students lost this valuable time for teacher support during each block. I'm also concerned with the appropriateness of putting fifth graders at the middle school. Fifth graders are so far from eighth graders in terms of development and maturity. It's just not appropriate for fifth graders to be with them, much like it's not appropriate for eighth graders to be with 12th graders. I know we could look to neighboring districts and justify our choices because other districts are doing it, but we have the power to do what's best for students and staff. We want to stand out from our neighbors. We want to be different and attractive. We don't want our choices justified just because that's what other districts are doing. Please look beyond the financial price tags of these buildings. What is happening in our buildings can't be labeled with a price tag. It's invaluable. I know right now the focus is on the floor plans and the price. That's a fine place to start, but it can't be the end before making a decision about what to put on the ballot. It's the beginning of the process. Now it's time to dig in, research, and find a plan that will work well, and what is best for our students and staff. The ripple effect of what building plan you choose will have an infinite number of implications and many more costs than what's shown just on the floor plans.
Next up, we have Michelle. I can't read her last.
That's okay. It's Nina Meyer. Sorry. My handwriting is kind of sloppy. And I apologize. I'm not a big public speaker, so I'm a little nervous, but something I'm passionate about. So I just want to start by saying I'm just coming before you as a parent to support my child, all the other children, parents, teachers, that are kind of being affected, some of the things that are going on at the elementary school right now. We're facing some, it seems like, behavioral bullying-type issues that as parents, we don't feel like are currently being addressed in the policies or the student handbooks. One example I can give is that the current student kind of policy states in the handbook that we're using teachable moments approaches rather than punitive one. I agree this approach works in many, you know, smaller behavioral situations. I feel like some of the things that we're hearing from our students in regards to physical violence, bullying-type behavior, punching, kicking, hitting, being called losers, being sworn at, and these are six, you know, seven, eight-year-old kids, or six, seven-year-old kids. And the classroom evacuations are occurring because we're working on teachable moments. With that being said, I just kind of feel like we, as parents and educators in the district, and principals, teachers, we can do better. We can improve our policies. I have spent a lot of time in the last couple of weeks reading other local elementary school policies just to kind of get a feel for what is going on, because I feel like we're often being told that, you know, we can't do anything, or like our hands are tied because this is the state law, or this is what we're following. But, you know, I'm reading some examples. I'm seeing other elementary schools have bullying policies. Other elementary schools, New Richmond Elementary School, has consequences for inappropriate behavior written into their student handbook. So I guess my point is just as a parent, and I know we have a couple of other parents here as well, we want to feel like our kids are safe at school. I don't want to feel like my six-year-old is being bullied or, you know, being sworn at and picking up these behaviors that he could be bringing home or bringing around other children. Every household is different. My household has a zero tolerance, physical, non-consensual, whether it's teasing, touching, whatever. And I just worry like with what our kids are being exposed to, what is this leading to, and where is this going? Is this physical stuff gonna start to increase if we don't come up with more strict policies? I will say with that, you know, I recently reached out to the principal, and it sounds like we're working on, you know, getting a parent feedback group going, which does make me happy. But I guess I just want to say, I feel like as a parent of a third, possibly even fourth-generation student of Osceola Elementary, that like we can do better. We can work together as parents, as educators, as teachers. I want to find the middle ground where we're all happy. I want to feel like my child is safe every day. But I also, you know, I understand that schools have a limit to discipline, but I feel like we're just not where we could be. And I feel like there's not clear definitions of what is defined as like these certain behaviors. What are the consequences? What, as parents, we don't know that. We're just being told, you know, oh, your kid got pushed today. Your kid got hit today. And then my son's, you know, somebody called me a loser today. This kind of thing, and I'm just, we don't know as parents what's going on. We're not being told that anything. So, sorry if I'm rambling, but I just wanted to let everybody know that's kind of my feelings as a parent, and I just, I look forward to kind of moving forward with the district and just kind of principals, teachers, and getting to a middle ground where everybody can kind of feel happy and feel safe while sending their kids to school again. Thank you.
Alright, with that, we will move on to the consent agenda.
Anyone have any issues on the motion to approve consent agenda?
Just move with my Kyza. I don't think Cory has any further discussion. Dana, all votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote to be aye. That is approved. Item three, administrative department and school board committee reports. Item A would be administrative reports. Start for me.
Oh wait. I think it's just. It's not monthly, sorry.
Oh my gosh.
Sorry.
Our it's real fast right now.
It's not our normal monthly, sorry. And so we'll start. I'm sorry. I just went into the normal. Great.
Oh, I was.
Yep.
So let's just, let's move on to item four. We'll come back to item three. Improving our academic achievement and accountability through data-driven practices. We're gonna go to.
Number five.
Number five. Aligning and developing our facilities to best meet educational safety and security goals. A, elementary facilities planning. Hey, look where we ended up.
Well, good to be back, good to see everybody. Not a real, a lot of new information for you this evening. If you remember correctly, when we were together last, we had reviewed the three options that were narrowed. We have sent the invite to the community and are starting to get feedback on the input form that was shared via link in the community and will also be shared at our upcoming listening session. We did have our first staff meeting today, so we met with the elementary staff, and about, I'd say, in the neighborhood of 15 elementary staff members joined. We spent a solid hour, maybe even a little more than that, with them. Great feedback. We really learned a fair amount from them, and they had good questions and then feedback on the options. Tomorrow morning is intermediate school, and then there's just an open block for a couple hours of virtual time, where anybody that's got a break or wants to pop in from any of the buildings can take advantage of that. So by noon tomorrow, we should have a good sense of any thoughts from staff. And to the, one of the items that was pointed out by staff, which I thought was a good observation, is there's one slight discrepancy between the three options currently in terms of space. We had flex classrooms built into option one and option two. We didn't build those in to option three. So right now, we do have two classrooms on the upper floor with the library in that option, so the expanded intermediate school option. We did have a couple of extra classrooms upstairs on the floor plan, but we didn't kind of take that across the remaining, you know, first through fourth grades. So we maybe, if we wanted to just go apples to apples across the three options, we might get a couple classrooms shorter on option three than we were on the others. So just a consideration whether we want to address that now, be the time before we go to the community with those options. Beyond that, they just had really good questions, thoughts, constructive feedback in terms of some similar comments we heard, and maybe the opening comment this evening in public sessions regarding, is this focused on staff? We said, obviously, no, this, if we have X number of kids, we need Y number of educators, and the staffing plan is built around number of students and needs and that number of classrooms available. So hopefully that helps start to tamp down that if it is a conversation. Otherwise, we did have, we do have up on the screen now the presentation, which we plan to use next week, and next week and the following week's community input sessions. So we'll breeze through this, because much of this is, I mean, you've seen most of this as a board. If you want to stop at any point, please let me know. Like I said, this, we're gonna take more time with the community as we go through this, but just give you a sense of what we're sharing, and then we'd love your thoughts. And if we're missing anything, we have still time to get that added for next week. What did I do wrong?
Do you want to, on the side, do you want to make sure it's on the mouse setting?
Oh, there's a mouse setting. Oh, it was on the mouse setting.
Can I see this on the call?
They both have it, too. They should be. Uh-oh. Alright, so just out of the gate, can introduce the team that will be present and engaging with the community? Brief agenda, so you can receive background information, more reclining for the future, the financial piece, which we reviewed as a group last time, and then we do have a feedback form for them. Reviewing the process, just dating back to 2014 and where we've been since then, with the majority of the work being over the last two to, going on three years now. Overall timeline, which hopefully is very familiar to all of you by now. So where did we start? Again, the facility assessment. So again, I am moving quickly, obviously. So if you want me to call somewhere, just tell me. I know you have really exciting policy to get to, so. We did update the study findings. We don't read this word for word. The one note we did add here is just to clean up is that the internet's kind of midway down. You see internet reliability, that bullet. We did add that that was updated last summer with the installation of fiber. So we're trying to acknowledge that that was one of our most pressing needs that was addressed. Going back to the 2022 survey, just, you know, again acknowledging to the community that the majority of some groups at that point did suggest they would support the district pursuing an referendum. Enrollment, this was a question, I think, from this group last time as well. So where have we been? This goes back 13 years. So we picked 13, it says it's the life cycle of a student in the school. You can pick 10, you can pick 15, but we felt that was kind of basically appropriate, given that tenure that they spend with you. Did look at the future enrollment projections and are acknowledging, you know, the projected decline in enrollment over the next five years. Hitting on the daycare piece, you know, just the community need for this. It's growing. We, it would be a tool to attract and retain. And then just acknowledging other districts that are currently providing these services in the area.
Second be second grades.
It's all luck, right?
Got that one correct. So then, obviously pivoting from where have we been, where are we going now, right? So the thought here is we're just gonna give a brief overview of the three options that are currently being considered. And this again should not be anything new to you as a board. Review the plans with them. So option one, I think this was kind of a good did you know.
I like that.
Yeah, it's just a nice add in terms of you've owned this land for 20-plus years, and it was always intended for some form of expansion.
Um, when did the basic field get ended? I don't have a bunch in here, so. I was just, I, you remember? Because intermediate came first, and then.
Again, obviously not a floor plan, just a diagram of what the school could be and how it could organize. Option two, put the remodel of the existing. Site plans, floor plans. Option three, the elementary addition. For those that do want to see, we did stake this out today. So we did mark where it would be in terms of the largest footprint. So it's basically this footprint you see on the screen now. It does extend, if I read the date measure correctly, up into the slopes slightly, let's say 20, 30 feet up into the slope. But not the end of the world. We'll reconfigure it. It looks smaller on this plan than when you're out in the field, I will admit. When we were out there today, right? I mean, it does feel like it takes up a vast majority of the flat green space to the east of the current building. All the stakes are in, and then I believe tomorrow it's gonna get striped, right? Somebody's gonna run a chalk. A field chalker will run through and mark the outline for you to see. And I will admit, if it's within five to 10 feet, but it actually is, I'd be pretty proud of that. It'll give you an idea of where it is. I could help, thank you.
I have one picture. Okay, I don't know that you know that, but I have one.
Any other left this one?
Preliminary floor plan for this, this is the option where the library would be up, with a couple flexible classrooms up there. Scope of work at the intermediate, sorry, at the middle school. Then pivoting to the cost, so this is a slide that Myron will touch on, is how our preliminary cost estimates generated. The cost for the three options, which I don't believe have changed since last time, correct? We should look again, technical for US board members. Then we're gonna pivot into what does this cost mean? So the school financing piece. Again, this is really built from, the majority of this, if not all of it, is from Debbie's presentation at our last board meeting. We did put in the historical mill rate chart, so that was a question from some previously. Local mill rate comparison, this is a question we almost always get, is how do we compare to our neighbors or conference schools and things like that? So I think this was a good add to give people context. Here's the term that was not in the last presentation, if you remember. This was the one that was missing in Debbie's presentation, that I think I called the squiggly line chart. But again, this is the historical municipal bond interest rate metric. And so the, what it's showing is that we are higher than we were at record lows, which were basically, if I remember correctly, kind of right in the heart of COVID. We're still well below traditional averages, and it's still trending well below what most of us think about when it comes to an interest rate when we just look at a 30-year mortgage. We call this the house chart, right? The one that's probably most impactful for everybody. One note, one thought we did get from the board, from the elementary staff today, which I think was a good one, is on this screen, it's legible, but on any screen smaller, we probably need to drive the size of this up. So we'll probably take a fair amount of the detail out, put the notes, the assumptions, we'll put that on a second slide, so we can just really make the content as big as possible for viewers. Not gonna hide the information, obviously, but I think it just was a little, it was hard for, I think, that group to read. And then the summary, right? Where were we? This puts everything in one place, right? The option, what does it do for grade configuration? What is the cost? What does the tax impact on a singular slide? And then feedback. So this is obviously where we're hoping people will scan. We also, I believe, are planning to have paper copies, correct? April did a nice job putting little scan tires together as well, so those will be at every table for those that come to the meetings. They can scan, provide their feedback right on their phones. We're gonna have paper copies if people want to write their comments and feedback. We'll then obviously take that and enter it in, so it's all of these populated into one place. So really looking to get consistent feedback, so that we're not getting kind of sporadic feedback that's hard to process and hard to understand if there are any true trends there. So we're gonna use this method. Obviously, we're gonna be there, moving table to table, having conversations with people, answering questions they have as well. Of course. No, that's fine. And this is just announcing the meetings, right? So we're having one next Thursday night and one following Tuesday night? I think that's it. Yep, alright.
Can you go back to the middle school one? What that meant. Sorry.
Never mind.
I still, like, with the potential other two options, we show what, like, additional play space or equipment would be outdoors. And I'm still not clear where that would be here.
We'll look further at that. We added the note to make sure that it was captured in the budget, and just as a reminder that planned for additional playground equipment there. We haven't located it, but I'll, Clint and I will look at that and make some suggestions.
I just think that's, for me, it's important to me to see, like, how maxed out we might be getting, or like, is that in fact gonna be doable? That's something that goes through my head.
That's good feedback.
My other thought was with what you referenced earlier. I really think it's only fair for us to be comparing apples to apples, so looking at, I don't know how that works, but adding that other flex space into the third option, to me, seems the only way to get.
Yeah, we can do that before next week. It's, we did, and I will admit, we always knew there were gonna be things that came up on this plan specifically that we hadn't thought about, because it did come together somewhat quickly. And so we are carrying some dollars within that budget to deal with the things we hadn't thought about yet that would come up. So there is some dollars there. It's not enough to address some, all of the challenges there in terms of adding extra classrooms, but missing a few offices, adding a few smaller construction spaces that would easily be accommodated within the allowance that we're carrying, but two more classrooms, I think, we're better off getting them in the budget now than trying to carve them in later.
My other concern, Matt, is two kids club ones doesn't quite seem like enough square footage. But when I think about where they're at at the elementary school, after school, they're everywhere.
Yeah, that's a fair question. I thought too, is what we had talked about in all of our prior options, but.
If you could make a, I'll look at that, because currently, right now, they're in like a media room, and a cafeteria space, and a stage space.
Everywhere.
Literally everywhere.
Still have to pull off a whole other.
Yeah, I mean, we intentionally put them across from the gym here, assuming that that would be a space they would use regularly in their after-school time. But yeah, that's a fair observation. We also toyed with maybe kids club ends up pushing down, and one of the, or both of the rooms are remodeled out of the cafeteria expansion. If we don't need all of the current library, for example, for seating, and then they would naturally be spilling out into the cafeteria as a space that they can use after school and before school. So we haven't solved that problem, but I think the key is to get the right square footage. Where it ends up going, we'll all work that through as a group down the road, but we should make sure we have enough square footage. Good feedback? Other thoughts on plans specifically, or just anything within the flow order or presentation? Are we missing anything that you think is important that we share?
Do you have any questions today you want to contribute to the meeting?
No, I think, other than, I think, maybe the same sentiment we heard of is this being done to cut staff, that surprised me a little. I think we generally have been upfront that this is about addressing our aging elementary school. This isn't about cutting staff. If we inherently gain operating efficiencies out of that, great, right? I mean, that's a positive. But the goal was not to come up with a plan to save two teachers a year. That's obviously never been the goal.
And I think the daycare piece came in with strong, as a need and a desire. And also, what about Brooke's option four actually was asked? So I think we actually did look at it as a team, and I don't know if you want to talk to the prices.
Yeah, so we did look at, and just as a reminder, the option four that really Brooke individually had asked about last time was keeping, I'll say, the 1990s section of the current elementary school, using that for daycare and possibly kids club. And then obviously kind of downsizing the addition at the intermediate school or even others. And so we did look at that option four, and it was in the, we didn't do every last detail. It was a high level, it was in the mid 40s to 45 million, so it did kind of fall in line with option one and three from a price perspective. so it did kind of fall in line with option one and three, uh, from a price perspective. And if I remember right, the, keeping the ninety section of the existing, I'm gonna make this number up, was six, seven, eight, nine million dollars, it was.
Correct, and so we dove into it a little deeper, you're cutting about eleven thousand square foot out of the building you're seeing on the screen here, transferring it over to the original, but you're keeping thirty-five thousand square feet of building by the time you keep the gym, you keep the cafeteria, and all the ninety's that they would have.
I'm not to sound like a complete broken record here, um, I think I was approached by ten to fifteen different community leaders at the last meeting saying, you can't cut down on your original. And it just, I mean, that's what I felt since day one, I, I still struggle with that, so.
If you remember, I did look, we looked back through the notes too, we did always have on prior conversations, we had what would it take to make the one coordinate into two? In any of the options when we left, back then it was two-ish million. Obviously, it's gonna be a little more than that probably now, but that is another option.
We were adding one to the middle school, too.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point, yep, the master plan had that. So that, that is another option, if as a board you feel like that additional gym is a must-have, we could always look at that in any of these three scenarios of adding two to three million dollars to the price tag to basically gain one gym station, even if we lose the elementary gym.
So the next meeting is tomorrow morning?
We have intermediate staff, I think, it's at the intermediate school, doesn't have to be intermediate staff, anybody can come, but it'll be at the intermediate school from seven thirty to eight tomorrow morning, and we've got eight thirty to ten thirty virtual, just drop in. That's an unstructured opportunity for staff to jump in and ask any of us questions and learn more. And then, just as a reminder, we're next Thursday, November second, and then the following Tuesday, November seventh, both at the elementary school cafeteria, both at six thirty. We'll run through this presentation, work, talk table to table, answer questions, and then encouraging people in attendance to provide us feedback either in written form or through the QR code. Yeah, I, I, I think you're doing the best you can, and these are always, uh, always hard to drive a great deal of attendance to. I mean, the fact that a postcard line is in every home, I think that's critically important. You know, I mean, as a, as a board, you're showing that you're committed to communicating with a non-parent, non-staff group, who are your hardest group to communicate with. Um, so I think that's an important, uh, piece and, and an important commitment you made, uh, to make sure they're as included as they can be. Will they attend? We'll find out.
But it's not our decision, it's their decision, so I hope people want.
But then their decision, like, comes to election day.
I want to know, you know, what people are thinking there, get things out there so people can know.
So yeah, there's, that was really our goal for tonight, was to make sure you guys were comfortable with content, make sure that we spelled Frederick wrong, and see if anybody was paying attention, we really did that on purpose.
Appreciate all the hard work.
Your feedback is valued, thank you. Anything I missed, Andrew, or? April, anything on me, you've been in all meetings as well?
Did you want Hilton to stay out today? We can't have rings.
She was the only one that was prepared, with the correct attire.
She was right, no coat.
Thank you. See you next week, hopefully you can all make it on Thursday.
Thank you, Clint, thank you, Kate, thank you, Megan.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
I'm heading back up now to, uh, administrative departments to work with many reports with administrative report. We have book, tech club, and people service.
And middle school, yep. You're right. I just see your face.
I knew it. Two weeks in a row. Don't have any new information.
So I'm Jesse Thorson, Director of People's Services. Uh, people services, there's a few different things that are covered under that. Tonight, I'm just gonna talk about special education and then the coffee shop. Um, next time when I come back in the spring, I'll talk about our ELO services and homelessness and counseling staff and those kinds of, those other categories that fall under, under me. See, okay, so first, starting out with special education. So this is all of our special education staff. So you have, I have it broken down just to elementary school, intermediate school, middle school, and high school. So you can see our certified teachers there, so all of our special ed teachers, and then the paraprofessionals in each building. There are new ones that we've added, so, and then we'll have a new one at the middle school as well. Um, and then the specialists, so I just lumped our speech-language pathologist and our school psychologist. So that's kind of the overview of the special education staff. Wanted to give a little bit of background for people that maybe are not familiar, because the next slide is all just letters and numbers, and it's just a lot to look at, and kind of hurts my brain, so I was like, I need to take this a step back and just explain a little bit. But there are twelve categories you can qualify for special education. Um, so those above, there's, there's nine above that obstacle services here. There's three that we don't have, any students that qualify for, um, blind or visually impaired, deaf-blind, or orthopedic impairment. We just don't have any students that meet that criteria right now. And then the stu, the, under the line are all of the related services. So to qualify for a related service, you have to meet one of the other categories of above. Um, so SVD, you'll, you'll notice in the next slide, is our significant developmental delay. That's a category that only is serviced at the elementary school and intermediate school. It really, it changed a few years ago to, it used to stop at age six, and now it has gone, they changed, the state changed it so that those students can be serviced up till age nine. So really just allows a little bit more time for the students, you have to, you have to be deli, significantly delayed in two or more categories. So it'd be like motor skills, communication, cognitive skills, but it just allows us, maybe a student that wouldn't meet criteria for a specific learning disability in kindergarten or first grade, and couldn't qualify for this, and then receive those services. Before they turn ten, if they're gonna continue to rece, receive services, they have to meet the criteria for one of those other areas. Um, so typically then they would, if they still are showing those delays, you know, going to a specific learning disability, emotional behavioral disability, speech-language impairment, so some of those pieces. Um, yeah, so typical, you know, the, the twelve categories there. Some students qualify as a primary, and then they also can qualify for a secondary as well. So you'll see that in some of our numbers, don't always total up, because they might have qualified for an other health impairment. So those are areas more related to medical areas, so if they have, um, like, ADHD, would qualify under other health impairment. Um, but then they might also, as a secondary, have a speech and language impairment, so they can qualify for both, but you have to identify a primary and a secondary. Any questions on, on the categories? So, doesn't that sign, just like, hurt your brain when you look at it? So you can just see how the numbers fall in each building. So as you can see, you know, OES and OES, they've got those students that qualify for the SVD, that significant developmental delay. You don't have any students right now that qualify for, you know, EDD, the emotional behavioral disability, or that specific learning disability, right now. As the year goes on, we might have some that qualify for that, but typically to start out the year, um, you know, for those, you know, first or second graders that might qualify, but not right now. Um, ID is that intellectual disability. Yeah, so you can just kind of, you can see how the numbers fall. And as the, as the students get older, you'll see, you know, OMS, that big chunk of time, so that's specific learning disability. So as, as the years go on, and sometimes those gaps get bigger, that's where we see the students that are struggling, maybe with that reading or math. So typically, middle school and high school, that's when we, you know, well, you'll see larger numbers for that, or the emotional behavioral disability. Okay, keep going through this. These are just the totals district-wide, so you can see, you know, eight students with a significant developmental disability. ASD is the autism spectrum disorder, OHI, other health impairment. Other health impairment, um, and the ASD and the SLD, those are typically, you know, our high incident, um, categories. The DHH, deaf heart of hearing, intellectual disability, or traumatic brain injury, those are what we would consider those low incidents. We don't have, you know, just across the nation, you're just not gonna have as many of those categories. And then again, after the speech and language impairment, you'll see the, the related services. So speech and language is that only category for a related service, that can be a primary disability, but it also can be serviced for a related service. So again, you have to meet that other criteria, those other categories, to receive OT, which is that occupational therapy, so to work on, you know, those mind motor skills or sensory needs, PT, um, the, you know, physical therapy, and then if students need a special education transport. They don't all add up, because I wanted to make sure, so we serviced two hundred and five students with an IEP in the district. Um, there's two hundred and thirteen on here, because I wanted to make sure to include, if you saw, it looked like maybe we didn't have service any uh, for, um, the speech and language impairment at the middle and high school, but we do, they're just the secondary disabilities. So that's why we have the two hundred and thirteen. Any questions about special education? Now I'll move on to the coffee shop, a little bit more, a little more fun. So the coffee shop, which everyone calls it, but we, it is called the Oasis, that's, that's the technical term for it. Uh, just wanna give you guys a little bit of history on it. I cannot take credit for this, Mr. Spiegel had a, had a little site visit over to New Richmond and came back and saw, I don't even know what he was there for, he was there for another unrelated visit.
He was presenting to their staff after school.
Yep, and he popped in and saw their coffee shop and all the amazing things that they were offering for some of their students, and came back and talked to Holly Stewart, one of our special education teachers, and just said, you know, we really could bring a lot more opportunities to the high school. Um, it was also, you know, post-COVID, we had, we didn't have any opportunities for our students to kind of go on community. I think prior to COVID, they were going to Tippies or working in some of the retirement homes, we just didn't have that, so we wanted to create those in-house opportunities, have a little bit more control over the, the job-related experiences. Um, so Holly and I took a trip over to New Richmond as well and saw their coffee shop and saw what was happening over there, and, you know, I said, like, we can just start really small, we can start on a, we can start on a cart. And Holly is just, you know, she's a go-getter, and she, you know, wants to take it all on, so we did, we started small, just with a coffee and ice creams. Um, it has now expanded, started in one room, now it's in, as you can see in that, that next room, it's in room six thirteen. Um, it's, it's expanded, it's gotten bigger, um, they, they've expanded healthy snacks and brownies, and they have the special K bars, which are amazing. Um, this, this summer involved, they installed a three-compartment sink to just get them up to the health codes. Um, we have either one or two, depending on the number of students that are in there, um, staff members, uh, so either a special ed or a certified aide in there, um, just kind of depends on the student schedules. And it's open from seven thirty in the morning, some of the students, and the aides are in there bright and early, burn the coffee before, you know, most people are even there. So, um, and then they do kind of their shutdown and clean up at wind. So we have, right now, currently, about fifteen students with IEPs that are working in the coffee shop, and then they also bring in some peer tutors, so just to kind of help oversee, kind of model some of those job-related experiences. The flyer you can see there was designed by Chad Leonard's marketing class, so kind of a cool little trend, a trend partner. Talk about that in a little bit. But how it relates with our special ed services, so any student that is working in the coffee shop has a goal on their IEP, so most are directly related to the social development, um, or their employability skills, but then they also really focus on a lot of the transferable skills, like keeping their commitments, working with others, customer service, money management. Um, they're working on inventory, just regular job-related skills of how to block in and out, to kind of work at a cash register, and all of those pieces. Service times vary, so some, most students are in there for one, because it's special ed, um, class periods are half of a pack class period, which we call them skinnies. So, um, either one to three of those skinnies a day. How, just a little bit of how the coffee shop is backed. So next time, I'm sure we're gonna be working on ten percent of the monthly sales donated back to a club that's randomly selected. Um, so if you go in there and you're part of the chess club and you buy a drink, you can put your, your name in there, or you can put chess club in there, and then they'll draw that once a month and start to give, give back to the, the different clubs and organizations. Um, they, for the middle school, I know Amanda's worked with Holly, a student of the Hecs can come and, um, earn some gift certificates. We use it for standardized tests, so, you know, fall, winter, spring, if you show growth on your pre-ACT practice test, then you can earn some incentives in the coffee shop. Gift cards, um, they have it for teachers at high school for any positive behaviors that they're seeing in their class, they can earn, students can earn some of that. And then staff appreciation day, like custodian day, apparel day, they can come in and get free drinks. Really wanted to try to partner with a lot of community involvement, Sell Free Arrows is the coffee that we use, um, Crystal Ball Farms, and then the Good Cottage for all the food supplies. Just a little rundown on the profit and expenditures. Um, Holly and I are, this is not our expertise, but we've worked with, you know, both Lamont and Shannon, to try to really fine-tune it, make sure we're doing all the things that we need to do. But, you know, our initial startup cost was about four thousand dollars. That bought the refrigerator, it bought the basic supplies, so the coffee grinders, the, the brewers, the cold brew makers. And I, I don't even know what a lot of this stuff is, but it's amazing that the students are learning all of these skills, and then all the consumables. So that first year, we spent about eighty thousand, brought in about twenty-one, so we had profited just under three thousand. The second year, um, profited about, just under eight thousand. Um, you can say with that, that money, that's what we used to buy that three-compartment sink, so to help with just with all, the overall process. And then this, right now, this is our third year, we have, what, two thousand dollars to sell per month, that's not profit, that's not including all of the things we've lined up. Um, so of course, prior to, when we started out, it was just like, okay, what are we, what are we working on? Um, you know, we didn't know, we were just kind of throwing it out there. Um, so Holly has developed a course syllabus, if you wanna click on that, just so you guys can typically see. So these are the focus, and Holly goes through with all of the kids. You don't have to, you can just kind of see the overall course description, again, kind of those employability skills, all of those pieces. Um, we have a student handbook, which then will, will show what Holly does with that. We, we're not gonna go through all of it, but it's, it's pretty extensive of all kind of the, all of the procedures that they're learning and going through. And then this last part, Holly has developed, uh, a few, uh, tutorials. So you can see here, um, is she, so she recorded it, I think it is, yes, that one. So this is for the, all of the students can go through and then watch these independently, so this is like the first day of working in the coffee shop. And we're not gonna watch the twenty-three minutes, we'll just show you the first, like. Right, they're so excited to be there.
So, uh, we are going through our first day's list of things to learn, and the first thing is, is using the app. So, um, you know, we will be looking at our thing, um, shall be based on the coffee shop, how it's, how it's managed.
I'm sure you guys wanna watch this, but I know we have other things to do, so I'm not gonna. Okay, and then again, partnering with the marketing class, they developed a commercial, they showed that flyer that they did, and then they've also kind of just developed some improvement plans for things that they can work on and get better. This is kind of what's next, so I'm just kind of looking at, as the years go on, if we have some more profits, you know, just making, right, getting like a line in for water, so we can do the wander, rinse, and all of those things. And then we're kind of going back and forth about an espresso machine. Um, hot coffee isn't the biggest seller, but our goal is to really partner with and have our students to like go out and start working at Caribou and other, you know, Free Arrows, and using an espresso machine is kind of like a big experience, and so getting them to practice that here is, is what we're, what we're hoping. Okay, and then why we're all here, I mean, so this is what one student has to say about the coffee shop and what it's kind of meant to handle, we'll just close with these two little short videos. First one is that third one, yep.
Kind of, a little ways to coffee shops, just probably nice to do, you know, kind of make drinks here and there, and just, uh, a really, uh, it's a nice feeling, just making drinks and starting orders, and coming out of baked goods, which is common, common in a way. We'll also, yeah, learn about jobs and stuff, and how everything works, you know, I think. Yeah, I guess, yeah.
And there's, there's one, he finishes up, there's one more, just for his.
Yeah, I get to know people, I guess. That's okay, that's not about the coffee shop. We try to just organize it, you know, and it's kind of nice to just chill and, you know. Put some hours in the hours, you know. It's kind of nice to just chill and, you know. Put some hours in the hours, you know.
That's it. That's what we're supposed to. Feeling very proud of his work there. And it's, it's awesome just to see him kind of like growing out throughout. So, that's it. Any questions?
As far as the financial piece goes, Shannon, do we run it through like a social account or how do we have an activity?
Yeah, they have, yes. But different than like the student account. Uh, it's a student activity account that we have for the coffee shop.
Thanks, sweetie.
Yeah.
It's nice.
It's nice.
It's nice.
Is it just there already? Yeah. I'm a little nervous with the clicker. Okay. Um, we're going to switch gears. This was actually really nice. There's a lot of the things that she said I'm going to come back to. So, um, it was nice that you went first, but I don't have any cool student videos, so sorry about that. Or coffee shops. So our mission, we reworked our mission statements this summer a little bit with a crew. So all kids matter are important and can grow socially, emotionally, and academically. Just keep it very simple and broad. The other piece on that screen is the work that we did to kind of overhaul our PBIS. So changing it into OMS Pride. And that kind of leads us throughout our whole year. It's kind of our focus. So perseverance, respect, integrity, dependability, and excellence are focuses as we move throughout this year in middle school. Okay, jumping right into our academic goals. Our goal for both ELA and for math is that eighty percent of our students who tested below proficiency on the math test this fall will be at or above benchmark by winter. Okay, so some big things to notice on here, this, I mean, the numbers on the screen for you probably mean nothing to you because who cares what 222 is, but my teachers do care. So that's just really information for them. Some really big things for you to pay attention to, and we look specifically at our data here in a minute, is that we had a PD session this fall, in August, with a person from math. And he talked to us about the probability of us aligning our map score with our forward proficiency scores, which meant that we needed to change what our goal percentile is. So we went from a sixtieth percentile being proficient to us. So you can see up on the screen, sometimes a seventieth or seventy-fifth percentile is going to get us to proficiency more safely, like a little bit better cushion there. So our data feels a little bit skewed. OIS did the same thing. They changed their percentile proficiencies to reflect what we learned this fall. But that changes what our data looks like a little bit. So, how are we, how are we going to get to that goal? We're going to look at this data. We're going to look at what we're doing in our classroom, what we notice with kids. We have a new time this year called Thrive. It's basically an intervention time, but it's really geared towards how are we going to grow kids individually? And then just making sure that everyone's exposed to grade level content. So digging in a little bit deeper with numbers, these numbers are a little bit scary to me. So sixth grade of 101 kids that were tested, sixty-nine of them were below proficiency. So if our goal is to grow eighty percent of them, that means we need to grow fifty-five kids. Seventh grade, we need to grow forty-four kids to reach our mark, and eighth grade, fifty-four. Those are big numbers when you're looking at classes of a hundred or, or more. Math, very, very similar. Seventy-four sixth graders were not proficient, sixty-three seventh graders, and sixty-six eighth graders. So one thing I really want to draw your attention to is, I think we kind of always hold our sixth grade math team to a very high standard in our district. So look at that seventh grade row. There, it says that we have sixty-three kids that were not proficient, which is more than opposite of how they performed on the forward last spring. Last spring, seventy-eight percent of those kids, of those 102 kids, seventy-eight percent of them were proficient. So just stop and think about that for a second. So is that because we increased our percentage to be proficient on this? Is it because it's a fall test instead of a spring test? That kids are just maybe not as invested in it? So that seems like a really big scary number for all of us, but just kind of putting that in perspective, that it, it feels, it feels a little bit hard to swallow, but we'll get there. Because that's, it's not really a true reflection, I don't think, of where we really are. So, we've got some work to do too. The next level of that is looking at IEPs. So just kind of connecting back to what Jessie had talked about. The middle school in particular has a very high population of students who are supported by an IEP right now. Almost twenty percent of our building is supported by an IEP. So we are very heavy in our sixth and eighth grade groups with more than twenty percent of our students having an IEP. So we broke down this data in two ways for our students who are on an IEP. One, I looked at kids who are between the eleventh and twenty-fifth percentile. And I want all of them to grow to at least the fortieth percentile or above. So now looking at those numbers, in our sixth grade, we have both four and four in our math and ELA. I want all of those kids to grow out of that eleventh to twenty-fifth percentile band and get into the fortieth or higher. We don't have any seventh graders in that situation. And we've got five and six from that eighth grade group. Okay, so those are just our kids that are in the eleventh to twenty-fifth percentile, yeah. The step below that then is that, that group that's below the tenth percentile. So that's a harder group to move, obviously. Not many of them are even at the tenth percentile. They're lower than that. And they have been throughout, right? Jessie talked about like that cognitive development delay, significant delays, like those are the kinds, those kind of kids that we're talking about. So our goal is to move fifty percent of them from below the tenth to the twenty-fifth percentile. That's our goal. So looking at those numbers, for sixth grade, we have ten students who are consistently below that tenth percentile. So we want to grow at least five of them in math. There are seven for ELAs, we want to grow four of them. For seventh grade, we have six and eight that are below that tenth percentile. And in eighth grade, we have twelve and five that we want to grow six and three of them. But theoretically, they, they all have IEPs, right? All of these kids have IEPs that are significantly below proficiency. But we still want to grow them. Oh, all right. Right? And so the way that we're going to do that is obviously differently for these two different groups. But really trying to expose them to grade level content, because they're tested on grade level content for the forward, no matter what percentile they're at in our building. So we want to try to expose them to that grade level content with modifications and accommodations. But by not showing them grade level content, we have no chance in growing them. Okay, and then the third part is just that overall well-being. So, a lot of this work was just done recently, but we want a hundred percent of our students to connect with at least one adult in the building. That's our goal, a hundred percent. So I talked a little bit about our pride model, that perseverance, respect, integrity, dependability, and excellence. We started with dependability. That's a pretty easy one to start with. Is a kid showing up with their materials on time, or they come into school, are they doing what they're supposed to do? So each week I have staff fill out a card. And in the windows of the library, I have like dependable chieftains and then little notes are hung up all over in the windows. And every staff member doing one every Friday for seven weeks. So lots of pride cards were in the window. Then kids got a treat and were put into a drawing for the outpost at the high school. So that's a weekly prize. And then there, we're still doing Student of the Hecs. So every kid is nominated for a student of, or every teacher nominates a student for a student of the Hecs. And then one student is drawn for that, and that's reused Oasis. And I'm going to go back to Holly because I paid for those drinks. So if those are being given to us for free, then I'm going to come back to that. So kids were super excited. It was one per grade level that's come, that walked across parking lot. It's a big deal for those kids. It was very scary. It was passing time when we walked through. But they just followed in line with me and they went where they're supposed to go. So we're just doing a lot of different things to try to promote what we want kids to be doing, how we want them to be acting and treating each other. This Hecs is all what we're stuck. So everything in advisory, all of our notes to kids, everything comes back to respect. And then obviously, we're doing a lot of work in, in advisory and then just in our general classes as well. So some data to go along with this. Today, our seventh graders took the Sabers screener that asks about twenty questions for kids to self-reflect on how they are doing academically, how they think they're doing socially, how they think that they're doing emotionally. So just some last year's data. Last year, we had five students flagged as high risk and thirteen that were some risk. And this year, we had seven high risk and eight some risk. So, you know, two more high risk, still pretty low. That's, that's the whole seventh grade. So, and what I really liked while doing this screening is you typically kind of know, you think you know who your high-risk students are because typically those kids are meeting with your counselor or parents are reaching out. This always brings to light a few kids who you had no idea were struggling. And that's the nicest part about it is, you know, we get to connect with those kids and they get to have a private conversation. And parents are contacted and then their off-world services, we'll partner, we partner on Peachtree. So Peachtree comes in on Monday. And once a parent gives permission that their child can meet with a Peachtree counselor, that's what they're doing on Monday. So today, Paige Schmidt, who's our school psych, Lisa Stapplemore, our school counselor, and myself met with probably thirty of the 105 students. We met with all of our high-risk and some-risk kids that they're seeing right away. But then we also pull in a whole bunch of other kids that no one can tell who's, why they're being pulled or what level they are. So it was really cool for me because the first ten or fifteen that I pulled in, I'd never even had in my office before. And they're like, oh God, what is, what are we doing now? This is the office? So it was really fun to just get to talk with kids. We go through like, how is school going? What are you liking? What are you not liking? What, you know, what's your view on school? Anything you want your teachers to know about you? So just kind of a get-to-know-you little quick five-minute session. And they're in and they're out and it's great. So in the next couple of days, all seventh graders will have a one-on-one meeting with one of the three of us. Any questions about the Sabers? That doesn't connect to my goal at all. But my goal connects to our connectedness survey. So the other day, we took a, took a survey and all staff members, any adults in the building, their name is listed. There's some other questions too on that survey that just asked them like, what are your interests? Who are your closest friends? What do you like about the middle school? So it's really funny to see what kids type in there, but it was all appropriate, but it was great. Like lunch is, lunch is awesome. I can get seconds. Yeah, recess, you know, stuff like that. So, but a lot of positivity, I, a lot, a lot of comments that you don't expect middle schoolers to say, like, I feel super safe in this building. My grade is very accepting of new students. I'm just a lot of that, those kinds of comments that I wasn't expecting. So, pretty cool to read through those. So sixth graders who have been with us for seven, eight weeks-ish, ninety percent of them felt like they were connected with an adult. But that's still just with eleven kids that felt like they didn't have an adult yet.
At the school.
At this building, it was, yes. It was, we didn't list any other adult, just OMS adults. So there are still eleven that we got to find a way to connect with them. Do you know those eleven? I sure do. In seventh grade, we only had two students that didn't feel like they connected to an adult. Both of those students were new students to our district. And in eighth grade, not one student said that they didn't have an adult. So that was super cool. That's never happened before for me than when I've done this. So those numbers are pretty exciting for me. And it was so cool to see our eighth grade, because they can click as many teachers as they want to. So it was really cool to see our eighth graders pick sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And then just, you know, like Bruce Boss is on there and Jim Martenson, all of our people are listed. So to see how much more connected they are to people was really cool.
Nice question. So you can see like who they picked and what they all, it's not just yes or no. So maybe if something else happens later, you can maybe use that personal tool in the back.
Yep.
Okay, cool.
Yep. I can see who said no one, because there's an option where I do not feel connected to anyone. And then I can see all of the people that they chose and their answers to their, to their three questions. And we asked like, why, what are you interested in? So that if they're not really connected to a lot of people, like we know what they're interested in. So we can try to be strategic about who's connecting where to wait. Try to be mixed, doesn't it? Yeah. Nine, nine or 10 of them. Wow, that's super impressive. So our goal is that one hundred, those thirteen kids, one hundred percent of our kids feel connected to an adult by the end of the year. Any questions?
I'm curious when you talk about that thrive.
Yep.
Kind of a lot of it's intervention. What are, what are the kids doing that aren't in those like numbers that we mentioned that we're calling?
They are all at a thrive.
Okay.
They're all at a, they all look place to be. Teachers specifically choose what they're going to teach. So it could be like a review, it could be typing skills, it could be a STEM activity. So teachers, yep, it's, it's work time and it's, it's supposed to be beyond what they're currently doing in their class. And sometimes that's, that's to support what they're doing in their classroom, because kids may need a little bit more time or it's taught a different way. Could be to extend what they're doing in their classroom. Or it could be just like a fun project that they haven't gotten to do because we've changed what we're doing in our classrooms.
So really it's different than win?
It's a hundred percent different than win. Win for us this year is a homework time or independent reading. Those are the only two things that you should be doing. So thrive is like, we're teaching, we're doing something different. There's not a grade attached to it, but we're still expected to do that learning and grow. So everyone is in a thrive group. Those thrive groups change just after every in-service day. Because I give them that day to get their groups reorganized. It takes a lot of time. It's a lot of work for teachers to reorganize those kids intentionally.
And where did that concept come from?
You know, we had lots of conversations throughout the year last year about our win time didn't feel like it was working for us. There wasn't very intentional. It was just a lot of study hall time, which is good for some kids. And then other kids don't need to just sit there. We just turn it into game time. So if our goal is to grow each kid, then we have, we have to be intentional about how we're going to do that. So that's a lot of work. It's really hard. It has been hard to keep pushing through the pushback that I get because it's a lot of work for our staff. But I also had kids write down at thrive, and even my Sabers conversations today, one-on-one conversations today, that was a lot of people's favorite part of their day. So.
And how long is that?
Twenty-five minutes. So we took win, which was forty minutes, and kind of split it up into about a fifteen to eighteen minute chunk for, for win. And then a twenty-five minute chunk for thrive. And teachers chose the name thrive.
Item four, improving our academic achievement and a ton of other useful data. Item A, interview first reading of a policy. Of course, only twenty-four.
I really appreciate the breakdown, Kelly.
I needed that as well, because, right, I'm kind of new to this journey. So. So this sheet, right, shows what was updated. This is part of the NEOLA update. So this came to us in July. So I would not on purpose bring you twenty-four, but we've been delaying it because we've had other things going on. So it felt important. There's some new policies, like you saw the AI policy, for example. And please know the admin team sat down with all of these together too, so they ventured upon of looking at all the policies that impact their work on a regular basis. So like the AI policy is one that I would say, for example, it doesn't have a lot of content. And what our representative from NEOLA said is, it's ordered to get something on the books and you're going to be getting updates as they come in. The academic integrity policy, which is also new, or academic honesty, same thing. It existed in NEOLA, so we wanted to make sure that we had it here. And the team reviewed it and was like, yes, this is how we, how we want to make sure we have this in policy, not just in handbooks. So I don't know how you want to do this, if you have specific questions, if you need them all, if you, I don't want to go through each of them individually if that's not needed, but I will.
So I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
So, a couple of, I already mentioned some academic honesty and AI policies. So my question there was because we're dealing with AI from that part now with all that chat GPT and AI. How do we monitor something like that? Do we even have tools that staff can use that catches some of this stuff, right? Because chat GPT, if you say, give me a two-page report on blah blah blah, just put something up. Well, how do we know that it can't be that?
Because we've been doing a lot of learning about that, because I would say the team is sitting in that same zone. So one of the best strategies I just heard was if you think a pa, a paper's been created in AI, then you put it in AI and you tell it to create a quiz. then you put it in AI and you tell it to create a quiz. And you have the student take the quiz on their paper and see if they can pass it.
Audience couldn't see it, but she just let her way.
Right, and I love the same thing, I was like, oh my gosh, that's genius. I was actually sharing that with Cara before she came in because it was like, how do you keep ahead of technology? And I would guess, and I'm gonna ask Anna, that she knows people who are trying to use this as their tool. Right? So, so we aren't, we are trying to keep up. I know some administrators in the room have taken online learning opportunities. Because the other piece is AI can be amazing for educators as far as, I used to teach about oceans at a fourth grade level, create slides, addressing these core standards, including this there. So we need to embrace it and learn about it, but yeah, we're learning as we go.
Okay, and then the other one I have, just for clarification, I think I know what we're trying to get through here, but on the conflict of interest law, fourteen, one twenty-four point three.
Yep.
So, so the board member can't be a paid employer of the district?
But you can drive the law.
So I just want to clarify.
Stop operating there.
We're just, not referring to, we can't be like a coach or something, but a paid.
Volunteer, sorry.
That's always been the standard, though.
We were taking away the raise and.
Enter you in a bus driver.
Yes.
That's always.
Kind of life.
So what changes done at that?
Yes.
And they probably updated just some minor language.
So why are there so many duplicates? Like the criminal, criminal history, the family, the, the, um...
Why are there multiple policies for those?
So like the criminal history, they have policy fourteen twenty-one and thirty-one twenty-one. Why do we have so many duplicates?
It's the different categories, so it's support staff, certified staff. Because they designated that way also in our handbook, so if you have to tell the policies, you'll never, they don't have to send all staff.
And Jan, if you look up on the screen, I'll show you how it, how it flows in our policy. So the three thousand is professional staff, four thousand is support staff, so it's making sure it updates. Because that policy broken both those sections, so. They have gone away with making like, for example, there's one policy that is only eight thousand. So instead of having three separate policies, that's exactly, they could have just one. So they are moving toward that, but we will have a lot of duplicates. And they each have to make all the categories.
That was me testing your comprehension.
It's really funny, updating.
An AI quiz.
If it's an AI quiz, yeah.
Any other specific?
How much did we all spend on reading policies?
Too much. Just the highlight of my week.
It was, yeah.
I have like crushes. I don't like having policies just to add policy.
No. Was there some that Neola recommended that we didn't do or didn't catch?
No, well, there's more, this is just part of the update.
But wait, there's more.
Is there another twenty-four?
No, what do you, what is the, tell me what the reasonable max is for me, for real.
Twenty-four.
This is as high as we can go, this is my max?
About as much as I want. Whatever we need.
Because I did talk to different superintendents and they're going through their whole policy guide and so every meeting they're doing ten. And I just looked down and said, that's most affordable. I mean, but we also, I mean, super committed, April is huge kudos for creating this amazing draft here for us to work from. And we have more that we need to get through in order to complete our July update. And that's super important, so we stay there, but there's other work we need to do in the end of the holiday.
I personally have taken another ten, twelve category myself.
Okay, ten as well.
Yeah.
I'm not how long.
Some are very easy and straight.
Well, if they're four pages long and, you know.
I may have said at the meeting when we pulled one of the policies, I'm like, there's just no way we're doing this today. I'm like, oh, we gotta do it, we're all together. I mean, yes. It's super important order.
So I would say, you know, the board's expectation is we get through first reading, they would have to come back for second reading. Is there any board members or administration policies that are on these first readings that we feel like we need to review or change language or anything like that before we get to second reading?
I think this worked out nice this time, you know, we individually had each one to really look all the way through than having this here.
It was like the clip notes.
Yeah.
Any decisions on A of them you needed to modify language? Thank you.
You're doing network.
Yep.
Item B, would you review and approve the twenty-three, twenty-four question?
Would you approve it, let me know that and we'll send out those tax levies by Friday. He and Sarah did same, showed the same documents, so for the budget and the certified levy.
And there was no changes?
There was some slight changes. We have, I think I had to put on the original revenue at a hundred thousand for the private school vouchers, but it was actually thirty, a hundred and thirty-one thousand. So it was a little bit more. And then we were given prior open enrollment, about twenty-five thousand for unhealthy people. Sometimes that happens with this, I hope the students make, allow us to go back and put it on the levy.
So this is similar to what was done in.
Yep, it's a little bit higher than, you know, and I guess from my perspective, you're gonna have change, you're gonna have changes because you just have your, we have our annual meeting before we have the certification. So if you wanna avoid any changes, you just push your annual meeting back till after October fifteenth. But that's something that the board wants to look at doing, but you're always gonna have. I mean, the eight is gonna be a little bit different again. Like I said, you're estimating on your private school vouchers and your open enrollment, that's the dream. And they don't need that information until October fifteenth, so. You're gonna always see some slight changes. And again, I mean, yeah, if the board is interested in sort of talkable pushing that meeting back until everything is certified. My past experience has been after October fifteenth, but.
Is there a reason why we've been doing it?
You can do it in July.
Yeah.
First date statute, so. Um, when you set the date and you're in advance, that's where it gets tricky, right?
Oh, and our.
I don't think you can move the date after you set it at the end.
Well, I think, I, like, I'll look it up, but I believe that all the times you are all in it and.
Or if not, then I'm like, move it back.
Yeah, right, the, I was gonna say, because the, it isn't just us, it's the community that set the date.
Yeah, but.
The meeting of the last. Well, I, we moved the date last annual meeting, we moved it back for.
Forward eight. Oh, yeah. Yes.
It was early from the fair.
Because it was always the Monday after the fair. So we're all real exhausted that day.
So I just have a couple of questions.
Yes.
So our fund balance is running around thirty-two percent of our expenditures. And our policy is up to thirty, I believe.
Yeah, but that's gonna serve us well coming in twenty-four, twenty-five, because we're gonna need to utilize some of that.
I don't have policy twenty-five.
I think it's twenty to thirty.
Twenty to thirty.
Yep.
So, and we have more revenues this year than our expenditures. But a question that I have, with the increased money that the state gave us, where we moved up to eleven thousand and the three hundred and twenty-four per student?
Three twenty-five. And we only got to go to eleven this year. Next year, we'll have to go to eleven, three twenty-five.
Yep. So with that, and our state gave, would we have been able to run the school without that additional three million dollars that was on the operational referendum?
No, we went, we ran a beard, a model on that and we wouldn't have, I mean, we would have come up short. We would have had to begin to find out, I don't think that they know how much it was. I can go back and look, but we definitely needed a portion of that three million, certainly. You know, and I think when you're looking at that kind of stuff, you don't know what the state's gonna do. When the district went through the referendum in April of last year, it was still so unclear at the state level. So you either are going towards, you know, down the road of not going to referendum and going into fund balance, or utilizing that operational referendum going forward. And of course, you know, we didn't know until July what they were gonna do at the state level.
So I was just curious, thinking farther out than just twenty-three, twenty-four, would we ever be at a point where we would be able to run the district without an operation referendum and live within the needs of the money we get from the state?
No, the, you know, there is a really good slide, I think in Debbie's, from Debbie's presentation, I can't remember what it was, but it showed the amount that we would need on the revenue limit to keep up with inflation. And I believe that it was in the twenty-three hundred dollars per student extra additional on the revenue limit in order for us to be able to keep up with inflation, the sharing cost of utilities and with getting increases to staff. So I can confidently say that, no, because in twenty-four, twenty-five, when the three million dollars comes off, but we still have the additional eleven, or additional thousand plus three twenty-five, we will be coming up short on the budget. So essentially, that would be your first test year, right? In twenty, yeah, twenty-four, twenty-five, would be your first test year. So that would be the year the three million comes off and that we only are looking at the three hundred and twenty-five dollars additionally for people. And we will be running the deficit.
But we still need to be cautious as our enrollment is decreasing of our operating costs. We just can't keep going at what we're doing. So then the other thing is, we still haven't paid back that extra million dollars that was levied last year for the debt.
Yep.
So, which we're gonna talk about next month, right?
Typically, in my practice range, you do your debes and payments in the spring. So we probably could have hit it last spring. I would say that the reason we did it is because you were in flux with the staff. So, you know, certainly look at making that debes and payments probably this spring, maybe in May is when we need to do it.
Is there a reason they do it in May?
I had asked Anna, I have her back from that on some of the.
Because it's, because that's when the district receives all the money, because they get part of the money in January and February. Well, and then they get the final payment, part of it in August, when you get your money from the county really.
So you're getting payments in January, February, you get your mobile payment in April, and then you get your final tax payment in August.
So you kinda wait until they all go and then you make the payment?
Well, because you still really have that big portion in August. So again, I'm guessing it probably has to do with the fact that most districts have made their debt payments by then for that year, because typically you make debt payments in October and in April. So then it'll do a debes and payments and redo your debt schedule after you pay that debt payment. Because right now, again, like I said, we're limited to making debt payments for this year, but we'll be done making debt payments by the time you pay those loans.
So then my other question has to do with community ed.
Yeah.
So community ed went up twenty-some thousand in fund balance this year. We're still planning on eleven, a hundred and twenty-five, you're gonna still grow the fund balance. What does that hundred and twenty-five go towards in community ed? What programs is that for? And then why are we carrying such high fund balance in community ed?
Yeah, it's a question, so, you know, in particular this year, meaning that we're gonna make some transitions in that pool area, right? And that's where a lot of it, a lot of the community ed is going into pool and then kids club. But kids club is a subset of the program, so told us that last week. But we know that we need to do some updates in the pool office and that's gonna be covered with the additional twenty-five thousand. And whatever programming updates that we were gonna do in the pool area this year, so that's where the increase is likely. As far as why there's such a lot of fund balance, you know, I have to go back and review historical data to see where, you know, the change is made in terms of where the lending was five years ago compared to now and where expenses and revenues were.
Yeah, because those programs are supposed to be kind of self-sufficient, so we shouldn't have that high of a fund balance in.
So we are looking for approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four question. Are you gonna generate them at hand? Board, what's your wishes? Motion by Craig. Second by Kaisa. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close would be nay. That is approved. Item C is certify the tax levy for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Same document. Board, what's your wishes? Motion by Kaisa. Second by Corey. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close would be nay. That is approved. Item six, next meeting information. Elementary school facility planning information meeting is scheduled for Thursday, November second, twenty twenty-three. It's thirty PM in the elementary school cafeteria. Elementary school facility planning information meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November seventh, twenty twenty-three. It's thirty PM in the elementary school cafeteria. Next meeting meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November eighth, at five PM in the district conference room. The next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November eighth, twenty twenty-three, at six thirty PM in the district conference room. That being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen eighty-five oh one A deliberating concerning a case which was the subject of any judicial or quasi-judicial trial or hearing for the governmental body. See, considering appointment, motion, compensation, or performance evaluation data on any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercise of responsibility, individual contract.
Next motion, adjourned to executive session.
Motion by Kaisa. Second by Corey. Roll call. Correct.
Yep.
Jan. Kaisa. Corey. And myself, thank you everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.